Master is on.
Okay. So this is me speaking at microphone one. And here I am because the folks are going to be playing here. And so that's going to be like that. And then hopefully that audio sounds okay. And I got squeaky table. And I don't want to chew the mic, I want to say checking mics. So with that, here I am and I'm at this one and I'm talking and hopefully everything sounds okay. And then hopefully I'll get a response to say, hey, move to the next one. Continuing to talk and hopefully things are coming through okay. And then we shall see. Okay, all right, I'm going to go to the next one. So the next microphone is a little baby Shure that's supposed to kind of cover these three people on this other side. And I'm talking, talking, talking. Right now I'm just rocking two microphones. I'm about to hook up, I think I'm just going to do the shotgun. Now do I want to roll the shotgun all the way over there? I don't know, we'll see. But here I am, I'm talking on another one and we'll have to make fine tune adjustments on it if need be. But other than that, everything seems A- okay. But if that sounds all right, baby mic is hotter. Okay, so Nate, if you would, baby mic is number two. So bring it down just a hair.
Yeah.
Okay, and so here I am, I'm continuing to talk. And hopefully it is at a decent level now. And hopefully it's not quite as hot. And at one gauge, you know, you could kind of sort of use that meter that's on the mixer Nate. But you know, you can also use the meters that are there on V-Mix too. So and if push comes to shove, you can always pull out the headphones from the mixer and then plug it into the laptop.
Yeah.
So. Or if you got, I've got some earbuds.
I've got actually another set of headphones that I can use.
Okay, perfect. So I forgot. So hopefully that sounds okay. And then I'm going to move away from baby mic. Too low, adjust with people, yep, will do. We will adjust with people. Yeah, we'll have to keep it on baby mic. Let's see what we can for a moment. We gotta raise. Now it's about to get weird. So that's one, two, three. Is off. Three, I'm talking, talking onto that one. It sounds a little funky. I've got my funky little piece of tape on it, I think I'll take off. Woo, look at that, that's like ripping off a Band-Aid. So I will put that there. And this is not too bad. But there, oh wait a minute, was that it? Let's see, that's one, two, three. Three, three, three. Three, 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 three. I'm on mic three. Mic three, microphone three. So yeah, there's just something funky about it. And then that's where I'm getting some hum in too. Oh, there we go. Woo. So this is the emergency mic.
Okay, so if all else fails.
Well, I'm going to throw it down to. Yep, I got it all clear from Brooks there. This one might be funky. So let me go ahead and set it up.
So can we see the information from this camera because it's running into here and then that's going out into here?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. How do you map V-Mix to be able to recognize that camera? Or is it just automatic?
Uh, we had, I made under that preset, I made a, an NDI input.
Okay.
Because that camera is sending it via NDI.
Yeah.
I'm gonna. Is there a speaker? I'm gonna turn these packs off. Pepper mail. Thinking what we're doing. Going to do it. All right, I'm going to go over to mic three.
Okay.
And I'm going to talk into mic three.
Okay.
And hopefully things sound okay in microphone three. So things sound okay on microphone three?
Yeah, they do. I assume I didn't want to avoid the peeking?
I do, yeah. I don't want any red. All right, cool. All right, so I'm gonna turn it off for now. Excuse me. Okay. All right. And. All right. All right. I've got four. I've got four. Shotgun. Just four interesting things. So here's number four, you might have to pull up number four. And four is going to be really funky. Might not even hear it, do you hear it? Okay, cool. So yeah, here I am on number four.
Okay.
All right, so that's just the safety.
Mm-hmm. Um, should I throw back up this floor graphic?
Uh, yeah. And you killed the audience.
All right. Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, April 27th meeting of the Pembroke School Committee. We will call the meeting to order. We'll start off actually with the public health update. Then we will move into our two public hearings. One is the public budget hearing and the other is on school choice. Before we jump into that, just want to thank the community for coming together over the past about 10 days now. As everybody I think is aware, we lost two graduates of the class of 2016 tragically, Joey Baralini and Billy Hickey, two great kids, just phenomenal kids, but the town and the community came together like nothing I've seen in my time here. There's hundreds of people, thousands, probably thousands of people who have done something to thank in this, but there's one person I do want to specifically thank and that's Mark Duffy. Mark, I think people around here who have seen him present know he's a top-notch educator, but Mark in probably one of the toughest times of his professional experience, probably experience also as a parent, did everything he could to support the families. You saw him on the PAC TV special last week. You saw him deliver one of the eulogies on Saturday morning and if you didn't, if you can see the livestream from St. Beck was and it was outstanding. He did a lot to help the community and help the kids, including get them to dance in a pretty funny situation, especially if you knew a couple of those kids. But Mark really, if you want to talk about a community, first of all, the community stuck together, came together like something again I've never seen, but Mark was, Mark was really good at a time when the community needed. So thank you to Mark and thank you to the community. So with that, I will turn it over to Lisa Cullody who's here to talk about our public health update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'm sure most people at this time have heard that the governor's made some new announcements. I'm not here to go through these announcements page by page, but I am going to say what an overview of these announcements mean, what they mean for the school community and what they mean for the public at large. So starting April 30th, those that haven't been fully vaccinated, the expectation that outdoors in public places that you need to wear a face mask would be rescinded for those that are vaccinated. This does not apply to indoors. That's a really important thing to understand. Please understand it does not preclude like this event right here where everyone is spaced out six feet and not going to get up and move that have taken off their facial coverings to communicate better. That's not what we're talking about, but we're talking about your general office setting. Again, if you can sit in your office six feet apart, you can take off your mask, but if you're going to get up and move around, you need to put that mask back on even if you are vaccinated. But the more important thing is how does that translate to the school environment? And I wanted an opportunity to speak briefly to the school committee because this is a challenge you're going to need to think about. The vast majority of your population is not vaccinated because of the age restrictions. Obviously at the higher school levels, there might be some kids that are vaccinated, but again, they only became eligible recently unless they had some pre-existing medical conditions or some occupational hazards that would have made them eligible sooner. So the vast majority of your population is either not eligible or just became eligible and is likely not to have been vaccinated yet. So that's something that you would want to take into consideration while decision-making. I know that inside other municipal buildings that mask wearing is still going to be the norm and I would urge the school committee, I think we have 40 days left, that for consistency of think we have 40 days left, that for consistency of message to still require the facial covering wearing, you know, on the school property so that there doesn't seem to be a point of confusion where people could potentially spread the disease. And I will say that the early 20-something, late teen population is the biggest growing population. We're not seeing as much trouble with the younger children, thank goodness. Most of that has to do with familial spread when we do see it in those very young groups, but we are seeing it in that teen, early 20 group. So, I just want to bring that to the school committee's attention, something to think about from a safety standpoint. The reduction in space between seating, everyone's heard that it was gone from the six-foot requirement to three-foot requirement. I think Erin and I had discussed with all the school nurses that we are going to continue to notify out of an abundance of caution to make sure people are aware if their child's been put potentially at any kind of a risk, to allow that parent to assess and work with their own pediatrician on their next steps. However, the requirement that you isolate or quarantine unless you are more, closer than three feet is no longer there. So, that's no longer an expected requirement. That is now just a notification for your own benefit out of an abundance of caution. Within the three-foot mark, we're going to still see some need to quarantine, and we have also discussed at the very low educational levels, because of the nature of a very young classroom or perhaps a special needs classroom, we might still see entire classrooms quarantining because of the spatial challenges in that particular demographic. So, moving forward, so outside public spaces, that reduction in space setting for, for school does not transfer over to athletics. Athletics, the expectation is everyone still remains six feet apart. The expectation is everyone that is not vaccinated still remains masked unless the sport protocol requires otherwise, and that guidance is all sports-specific. All this information, I'm giving a quick overview, so understand if you need some in-depth details, mass.gov is where you're going to find those details. The reopening plan is backslash reopening. The athletics is backslash athletics, and you can get all detailed information on this, or reach out to me and I'll help steer you towards it. So, those are the biggest things that we're going to see changes on. Also, gathering in, in private settings, mask-wearing has been taken away. So, private settings are still only at the 25 persons, but mask-wearing within a private setting such as a private home is no longer required. Then on May 10th, we're going to see some more changes. We're going to see large venues go from 12% to 25% capacity. We're going to see some other industries start to open up, amusement parks, water parks, things of that nature. They do need to have a safety plan. They will be at 50% capacity for the foreseeable future. Large road races will be allowed to occur again, as will locals if someone is organizing that type of event. I just use road races as an example. You would submit to the local municipality. For Pembroke, that would be me. If you're going to run something like the Boston Marathon or the Pan Mass Challenge, you're going to submit your application to the state. Singing indoors will also be permitted with strict distancing guidelines on that May 10th date. In other words, if you can really spread out, singing inside is going to be allowed. May 29th, we're going to see some more changes. That's when we're going to see those group gathering sizes change. Limits will increase to 200 people indoors and 250 people for outdoors events. Keep in mind, commencement has been exempted from that, but that does not mean it is a waiver from having a safety plan in place. I know Erin's very well aware of that, and probably working with the schools on that. So, while we can have more people at events like that, social distancing and mask-wearing is still very much something that needs to be done whenever you're going to have in a high-density, human situation. Also, at that time, beer gardens, breweries, wineries, and things of that nature will be able to open up. Again, probably not your demographic, but maybe your parents especially after the end of this, they need this information. You will be allowed to go out and do all of that. The important thing to remember is just like us sitting here with our masks off, as I, as I joke with all the kids, butts in seats. If your derriere is in a seat and you're distanced out like this, it's probably fine to take your mask off. People aren't going to be moving around. It's when you get up and move around. So, at all these things like bars and beer gardens and stuff, you will not be able to walk around with a drink in your hand. You will be expected to, to seat and remain with your party. And then, the overall opening, if we can maintain this trend, and I'm now talking directly to the folks at home, if we all keep doing the right thing, the safe thing, the good thing, and getting vaccinated if we can, the expectation is by August 1st, we're going to see the quote-unquote "new normal" or "close to normal." Obviously, this depends on the statistic trends. We had kind of a, for me anyway, a little bit of a scary beginning to April. We started to see all these numbers shoot up, end of March and beginning of April. Thank goodness, right now, we've been in single digits for at least a week, maybe 10 days now in Pembroke. We had a nice little zero in there. That was wonderful. We had a nice one and two. Unfortunately, today we did have five cases, but again, if we can keep those numbers low, we can start to see things return to normal, and hopefully by this summer see some normal events. Parades and other activities will also be allowed, but at 50% capacity. The only caution I would give, you know, to the community at large as well as to the school group, is remember, these large events are allowed at 50% capacity. What is 50% capacity, and who's going to enforce that? So, I'm not saying don't have large events. I'm saying think carefully about what that large event's going to look like and how to manage a social distancing. In other words, don't go through a large event. You could be the next, you know, super-spreeder event. So, think about that before, before doing those things. Just because you can doesn't mean it's necessarily a health-safety choice that's a good one to make. But, does anyone have any questions regarding the new guidance?
Before we jump into that, let me just remind folks at home that if you do have questions, we are take, we take them in at sc underscore info@pembrokek12.org. So, we'll take those in and again, send those in and we'll try to get them. If we come up, if we're on a stolen topic, we'll happily ask it. If something critical, we'll go back to it, and if not, we'll make sure people get a written response quickly. So, questions for Lisa. Lisa, I just have two quick questions. Have we moved to yellow because of what's happened in the past, the numbers? So, we're back to yellow.
Statistically, we should be unless we have some really crazy numbers.
Right. We've been yellow the past four weeks.
Yeah.
Okay.
Unless we get some really high spike, we should remain there. My, my math shows we are actually flirting with going green most times.
Okay. That was the first thing. Second thing is, so even, they've lowered the school distance or the school guideline to three feet. We're still staying our five-plus feet, five to six feet depending upon the class. What, any changes to the quarantine rules that people should know about?
Yes. So, the most important one is because the now expected distance for quarantine within the school environment, and I want to be very clear, this is the bus and the classroom. This is not athletics. This is not outside of the school and extracurriculars. This is within the school setting. It's been reduced to three feet. So, let's pretend we were all seated like this, nice six feet apart. It's all been measured and checked. And Sue has COVID. Neither of her contemporaries on either side would need to be quarantining at this point. And that is regardless of whether or not any of them were vaccinated. Now, there's a whole nother situation where we're talking about vaccinated persons, but we're not going to really talk about it at this level. Like I said, so few of your demographic is going to be vaccinated, but that would be another possible exemption. So, the people we're going to be looking to quarantine from here moving forward are people that we know have been within three feet of someone that is positive for more than 15 minutes.
Got it. Okay.
Natalie, will you just click on slide five on that presentation?
Oh, I love it. She's got it up there. Of course she does.
So, for us, as Lisa said, the CDC still defines students within six feet as a close contact. For us, that's for notification purposes only. Quarantining is only in place if you're less than three feet. There are instances in a school day where students are three feet apart. So, if you're sitting in front or directly behind somebody on a school bus, you would still be considered a close contact. In a preschool, in some of our special ed settings, and then as well as in case-by-case. So, if there's students working closely together in a group, or a teacher and a student that work together, obviously, we're still going to err on the side of an abundance of caution and notify those folks of close contact.
Got it.
But we are going to do notifications. So, there's a difference between you've been notified that you had potential contact, maybe you want to go get tested, or if your medical history says maybe you want to be more cautionary versus in order to quarantine. If, if we're going to be in a situation where we need to exclude a child from school from here forward, again, special needs and the really young groups are going to be a little bit different, more of a case-by-case, but moving forward, it will be within three feet that you would actually be excluded and need to quarantine.
Right. And because of our spacing, we'll no longer be quarantining full elementary classrooms.
Perfect. Yep. Just wanted to make sure people understood where the ramifications, because that was obviously a clear concern on a lot of parents, you know, over the past.
Yes. Very challenging.
Yeah. It was, it was very difficult, especially at high school, students were getting back and then going right back out.
And it has not changed athletics. I know that that's been another situation.
If you move to the next one, it's fantastic.
So, athletics is, is still judged by energy, energy and environmental committee, which I'm not sure how that applies, but that's okay. So, we need, at this point, we need, they're allowing sports tournaments to happen, which is multiple teams playing multiple games at one venue.
Yep.
But they're, they haven't come down with any guidance on sport specifics. So, it would be a combination of them and the MIAA, correct?
Correct. But remember, the guidance hasn't changed on athletics, so all we have to do is go back to the mass.gov. The guidance has existed all along for hockey, all along for football, all along for soccer, all along for baseball. There's no change. So, we just go back to that. So, high-risk sports, they have not been changed yet. Do I expect that they will in the next month or two? I do, but they're not changed yet. So, if a football player becomes positive, the team is going to be quarantined. If a hockey player is going to become positive, the team is going to be quarantined. If a soccer player becomes positive, they're going to evaluate who might have been close. If a track runner becomes positive, it is unlikely there'll be a lot of contacts unless it was a really close sprint race or people were sitting on a bench, which they of course should not be doing.
For 15 minutes.
Yeah.
Consent. So, based on that, there's still the need to wear masks even though they're outside because they're not socially distancing within the sports.
Correct.
That guideline hasn't changed.
Yeah. It's going to depend on the sport specific, but yes, that is, that is really where you're going to see those, those challenges come in.
Perfect. Thank you.
So, I think it's important, Lisa and I talked a little bit earlier today, and I think it's important for the, for the board, even if it's a preliminary discussion and you don't necessarily come to a consensus, but what Lisa and I were talking about and what I would ask you to consider is that we require masks on school property regardless, right? So, if we have teachers that are vaccinated that are outside at recess duty, I don't want to get into a situation where that teacher is unmasked. Even though the guidance technically says that they could be unmasked, I think it's important for, for the committee to, to think about the optic of that, the policing of that, the fact that, you know, we're, not every one of our educators has been vaccinated, you know, there's some HIPAA pieces associated with that. So, we talked, Lisa and I talked today, whether that's a vote of, a vote of the school committee, a vote of the Board of Health, on how that's handled. But I do want to put on your radar that it is my recommendation that we require masks on school property regardless of state of vaccination for, for staff.
It's an abundance of caution. So, to the folks at home, yes, technically, could someone take off a mask and be on the property? But again, I share Erin's concern. What message does that send to kids? First of all, we want them to be safe. That should be our number one priority. The second thing is, we don't know, you know, who's vaccinated and who isn't. How do you control that? How do you police that? And then, third, if something were ever to happen, I know I don't want to be the person standing in front of the public and saying, "Well, but this person was vaccinated and that wasn't, and we don't know how all this happened." But that's, that's me. I'm always going to take the cautionary tale. I know most other town buildings and properties are going to remain masked through a brief conversation with the town manager, which I'll have more of a conversation with tomorrow. So, again, out of, out of the optics and the abundance of caution and the message it sends, I think that'd be more appropriate. We, we're at 40 days, so that's not that much longer.
We still would be under effect from what we put in place at the beginning of the school year. So, it would be a question.
Right. We just wouldn't be adopting.
We just wouldn't be adopting anything new, or we wouldn't change anything because it's until we either were asked. So, we don't, the point I'm going to make is, we don't have to take action because by not taking action, we're just, keep, exactly. It's maintaining, it's maintaining what we've already done.
Just like Massachusetts, lack of action is a previous standing.
Yeah. So, we'll, and we'll wait to see if anything changes over the next week or two weeks and late.
We're going to keep our fingers crossed. The numbers are going to continue to drop. We're going to see more onesies and twosies and zeros, and it's going to be great. And maybe in a week or two, we'll have a completely different conversation regarding that. I just urge people because unfortunately, it is things like breaks, it is things like vacations, when people do let their guard down, that we see those numbers start to come back up. You know, I want to see town meeting happen. I want to see some form of a graduation happen. I want to see, you know, all those summer activities come back to place, and I, I think everyone else does too. So, to just be casual about it for no, you know, return or benefit, I would just urge caution in that area.
An updated graduation guidance or commencement guidance is being released tomorrow, and it states students can be seated three feet apart, so we can condense some of that.
The students.
I just got hit by a parent saying prom with a question mark.
Right. DEFC is still discouraging proms in a traditional fashion, happening before graduation. Our, we have a great group of seniors here and a great group of parents are supporting those seniors. The current plans for those students are, June 15th, they had already been planning for a senior tailgate, which includes games and music and food trucks, and their traditional senior dinner is scheduled for June 1st. With the increase in some of, or decrease in some of the regulations, there's some flexibility on additional things that we could do for kids. But a prom in its traditional setting is not advised by DEFC unless it happens after graduation, and we all know the pieces that have been associated with that.
In there, because the guideline doesn't go to 2:15 until the end of May, right?
May 29th.
May, yeah.
Correct.
So, we couldn't even do anything before that because the graduating classes.
Right. It does help us with our sixth grade group. So, I know many of you are well aware of what sixth grade promotion might looks for our, looks like for our kids. It's almost like a mini-graduation, though it doesn't fall under the commencement guidance. But this does give us some flexibility for outdoor events for those students and allowing two parents and a little bit more than, than we were at before, so.
And I think that's a good point to touch on, the, the idea that the, the senior plan currently is an outdoor plan. Every piece of scientific information we have tells us outdoors is a lot safer. It's the fresh air. It's the everything else. So, if those events can be made fun and enriched, then, then I would urge that too, because outdoor, we are much safer, and then science is supporting that all over the place.
And similar to what's been happening all year round. We all have friends that live in this community or that community that are doing things different. So, I have heard from several parents about prom, question mark. Whitman Hansen, for example, has already secured Gillette Stadium. That is a ginormous venue. You can obviously social distance in that venue. Cohasset is having a prom. There's 75 kids in the graduating class. So, there's, there's just intricacies to each piece of it. So, I think it's important to not necessarily be wondering about what everyone else is doing. You know, Mark and the administration here at the high school, the senior class advisor, Scott Charlie, has been working really closely with the kids on what they're looking for their senior events to look like, and we're really trying to support them through that while still adhering to all of the guidance that's out there.
Great. Other questions or any comments?
I think we're just continuing to do what's right for this community. I guess I'm always surprised at the variation across communities, like Erin just said. You know, we're all following supposedly the same science, I think. Maybe not. But there is a significant amount of variation. And when we make a hard decision or a difficult decision, it's, it's not to be punitive at all. It's to be, to your point, Lisa, it's overly cautious. And with 40 days of school left, you know, most of us, you know, our kids can do that standing on their heads. So, you know, it's.
When you're that close to the finish line, you don't quit the Boston Marathon. You made it up Heartbreak Hill. You're going to, you're going to bring it home and enjoy all that rich rewards. And, and to your point, of course, people have said to me, "But this community isn't, but that community isn't." And I said, "Yeah, and those three communities you just named have all been on the Channel 5 news with some very unfortunate, you know, situations that have led to spikes in cases and other problems for those communities." I said, "The whole idea for me as a health agent, and I would hope is for the school community, is to not be that one. We, we don't want to be front and center for some horrible reason." You know, I think this community has suffered enough in the last, you know, week that what we should really be aiming for is a really strong finish to the year, certainly with all the fun activities, but do them as safely as possible as we can. Because I think, I think next year, we could see a very normal school year. I think the vaccines are going to be out there. I think those of us that have been vaccinated are going to get boosters. I think you're going to see boosters within the flu spectrum this year, and we're going to, we're going to have a, a very different-looking school next year, next year, and I really want to focus on that, and we got to bring it home in order to do that.
Thanks, Lisa.
To your point, though, I had a chance to meet with chairs from four other local school committees last week. The chair from Hingham brought a group together. So, in, you know, one of the things we did talk about was differences and things, whether it was back-to-school plans, whether it was, but there were a bunch of different things. And it all came down to a little bit of what Erin and Lisa talked about, different scenarios, different situations, right? Classes, graduating class of 75. You know, Hanover went back at three feet because they can't go back at six feet. Like, their facilities don't support it. So, I think everyone was doing the best based upon what they had. It was, it was interesting because, you know, one of the comments said, "Yeah, but we got compared to you, one of the other communities, about our back-to-school plan." They were like, "We were less aggressive." They ended up being less aggressive than us, but they were more aggressive in, with younger grades. So, it just depended on how you wanted to look at it. And all depended, again, on your situation. When you look at the facts, I think everybody looked at everybody else as being jealous of what they had done, which was kind of funny because nobody looked and said, "Oh, they did it the best." I just think you're dealing with your situation and what you have, whether it's facilities, whether it's, you know, staff, whatever it is. I mean, that's what, that's why the difference is.
In the state sanitary code, we have a phrase we use all the time. David's going to laugh because he's used, heard to use it a hundred. We call it maximum feasible compliance. And when you can't do 100%, whether it's the state sanitary code, Title V, whatever code you want to talk about, what is the maximum feasible thing you can do? And I think that illustrates beautifully, each community, for its facility, for its operation, for its population, did the best it could with what it has. And I think that's what Pembroke's done. And I guess all I'm saying now is, we are at maximum feasible compliance. I've been in and out of the schools. They're as safe as they can be with what we have operationally in place. And just, let, let's not back away from that now. Let's keep kids safe for the rest of the year, educate them as much as we can before the summer, and come back strong next year.
Thank you so much, Lisa, for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you all. Thank you for caring.
No questions.
Thank you.
While we're talking, thank you.
Thanks, Lisa.
Bye, ladies and gentlemen.
So, what we, I don't know what happened. Okay. So, with that, we will move to our public budget hearing at 7:25. Okay, so with that, uh, we will move to our public budget hearing at 7:25. Um, and the recommend, the recommended fiscal year '22 budget, full consideration. Again, we can remind everybody at home, if you do have a question, this, scinfo@pembrokek12.org, um, and we'll happily answer any questions that may come in, even from the audience.
So we don't have our handy clicker tonight, so. I'm just going to give a little bit of historical budget information, um, some of it we've seen before, some of it's kind of a different slice add, our data. Um, we're going to go through the FY '22 admin recommended budget, um, for, for your approval tonight, as well as what the next steps are in the process. So on this slide, you've seen a little bit of this before, it's just a historical look at our school budget, um, and our chapter 70 number, um, as well as the dismal increases that we've seen in chapter 70 over the past years, other than that one blip of the 4.3. And again, that was, um, in 2011, coming off the ending of that ARRA funding we talked about a couple of weeks ago. Um, here I want to talk a little bit about per pupil spending, um, so this is something we've talked about in years past, this was a big subject of conversation, um, the years leading up to the override. There's a couple ways to look at it. Um, so obviously glass half full, we're looking at, looking at it, saying, "What an amazing program we're able to put forth here in Pembroke with what our per pupil spending is in comparison to what it is for the state." Um, so in Pembroke, our per pupil spending, so this is for all students in district and out of district, um, it's just about $15,672 in comparison to the state's per pupil spending, which is an average of $17,511. On the next slide, we break it out by local communities and surrounding towns. This is for in district students, so I think when we're trying to compare really, you know, the operating system of a school district, it's important to take off some of the outliers, like your one-off special education students that are in a $500,000 a year placement, like I, it does, it warps the picture in a way that it's hard to compare apples to apples. So this is just looking at in district students in surrounding communities, what they've spent per pupil versus where we spend per pupil. So, um, if you've been listening to this conversation for 11 years or so, you'll remember there was a time when we were eighth from the bottom, 10th from the bottom, 12th from the bottom. We are 23rd, um, from the bottom of 351 of 40 in the district, um, per pupil spending. So here, you'll see for our in district students, um, for FY '20, so again, FY '20 is the last available data, because, um, end of year pupil and financial reports are submitted on October 31st in the fall, and then they need to be audited and certified before the, the information is public. So we'll be able to use FY '21 data as of December 31st of this year, but the last available data is, is from FY '20. So in Pembroke, FY '20, we spent $14,610 per student in district to educate them. There is a wide disparity of what local communities are spending, um, but it adds up fast, right? So if we're looking at Silver Lake, and I choose Silver Lake, because oftentimes when we have town level discussions, um, there are still some folks that were, um, part of the conversation when we divorced from Silver Lake and are fond of the earlier years and whatnot, so I think it's important to show folks that, um, if we were going to spend at the same per pupil level as Silver Lake spends for their in district students, we would need our budget to increase by just under $8 million, so 7.9 million to spend at the level that they spend at, which is 17,542. For a district that's really close to us, like Marshfield, where they're spending at $14,715 per student, to spend at that level, we'd need our budget to increase by 285,000. So on the chart, it looks like just a tiny bit of difference, $115 a student, put that out to the, to the full enrollment, it's just under 300,000. So I think we are able to do incredible things with the dollars that we have here. We have an AP program second to none on the South Shore, we have an arts program that rivals all of those in the state, we have, um, you know, so many opportunities for our kids pre-K through 12. I just think it's a testament to what our teachers and our educators are able to do with the funds here in Pembroke, but it's also important to know, when we're talking about people's plans, whether it's their return to learn plan, or what they're doing um, in a district as far as foreign languages, not everybody is working from the same base. And so I think it's important for folks to realize that the spending does, does vary widely across even communities that are just a few miles from us. So for the recommended budget, this is going to sound a lot similar to what we talked about two weeks ago, because not a lot has changed. Um, so again, our maintenance of effort budget, doing everything we're doing this year at next year's prices. We first delivered that to you all in January of this year, we're a little over 36.2 million. Um, we went through some of our required additions, which are further, um, along in the slide deck, as well as our Level One priorities, which brought us up to just over 36.5 million. This is a series of adjustments, reductions, and offsets that we take each year, as well as those that we've talked about, um, at this level since January, as far as budget balancing, their first one being retirements. Um, so that dollar amount that you see there is the difference between hiring, um, a new staff member versus a seasoned staff member. Um, so we just have one retirement rate now for FY '22, that nets about $14,000 in savings. Um, we've talked a lot about some of the revolving fund and other offsets. Right now, in our budget, that's in for $328,825. Um, on the next slide, I'm going to go through the details of those funds. We do have one enrollment-driven reduction that we talked a little bit about at the end of our last meeting. Um, so we have a .6 math teacher here at PHS, we did not fill it for this school year, just, um, you know, waiting to see kind of where kids fell versus in-person and remote learning, um, the class sizes, and we didn't need to fill it for this year. So we do have, um, almost the exact same enrollment, 804, I think, is the projected enrollment for next year, which is the exact same enrollment as this year, and the high school has begun to run the schedule and the sections, and we do not need to fill that .6 math position. So there isn't currently anybody in that role, it's just a, a clear reduction. As far as tuitions, we've talked a little bit about special education pre-buy, and then our last meeting, we talked a lot about, um, that vocational tuition offset, so I'm going to talk a little bit more about that on the next slide. The next one is fees, so at your last meeting, you voted to increase fees by $36,285. That serves as a funding, as a spending offset, right? So we would take expenses that would normally hit our operating fund and move them to the like revolving accounts, whether it's transportation or athletics, depending upon where the expense falls, in order to free up dollars on our operating budget. So we made reductions of $1,099,110, um, which brings us to our FY '22 budget of 35.5 million. The next piece of, of the chart here just shows what our current budget is, which is 34.3 million, our increase in chapter 70 and the increase in the town contribution, which gets us up to the 35.5 for next year. Um, you know, that, the House Ways and Means budget did come out, there was no increase in that chapter 70 number for us. It doesn't mean it may not change, um, the final chapter 70 numbers are, are never available until July or August, um, so there is still some potential, though I'm not very optimistic that it would move upward, um, we haven't seen it really move upward in, in that timeframe. So some of the budget offsets, again, I talked about the revolving, I mean, the retirements, as far as revolving transportation, the number that we're using is $135,000. That represents the fees collected, um, in this year that we didn't use as an offset as weather, as well as, as the fees for next year. So remember, we had about $65,000 in there to start, and we increased that, um, because of the surplus in, um, fees that we had collected last year that we didn't use to offset the budget. So $135,000 from the transportation revolving account. We are looking to use $138,825 of our SR2 money, so remember, that, um, total allocation is just over $360,000, so we would be using 138,000 of it as an offset for the FY '22 budget. Um, we talked last time about circuit breaker, so in some years, we have looked at circuit breaker as a budget offset, so using the payments in the same year that we received them. Um, our recommendation, I think where we landed last time, was to use 50% of the first quarter payment for FY '22, which is just about $55,000 as a budget offset. If things change over the summer, some of the funding picture, um, changes, we can adjust any of those numbers, whether it's the circuit breaker or the, the SR grant money, if we need to adjust, um, upwards or downwards, I anticipate downwards, but, um, again, the enrollment, enrollment-driven reduction is the .6 math teacher here, it is unfilled, the similar, um, projected enrollment versus, um, school year '21, '22. In the appendix, you can see the class sizes, there is nothing, um, in the math department that's teetering at a level where it would make sense to split, um, a section item. For tuition, our special education pre-buy, so we were originally, um, looking at, I think it was five, 450? Yeah, 550, um, and then in, uh, 450, and then an additional $170,000 was available, um, from the first round of the CARES reimbursement at the town level, so we'll put that towards, um, offsetting expenses this year, allowing us to do additional special education tuition pre-buy. Just a reminder, that tuition is the only item, um, according to municipal finance, that you are able to purchase in advance of the service being rendered. So you can purchase, um, up to a quarter of private school, um, private special education school placement, or up to a year of a collaborative school. For vocation, we did change our policy four years ago around, um, designating Silver Lake as our school of preference for vocational students. That adjustment there, that you see, anticipates and assumes the same number of students accessing a vocational opportunity as we have consistently had for the past five years. It just adjusts for the lower tuition, um, as part of Silver Lake versus, um, some of the other schools like South Shore, Botech. So we have $681,000 in, um, reductions in tuition lines, and then, as I said before, reductions in spending, um, are equivalent to our increase in fees, so the $36,285. Just taking a second to remind folks of the required additions, so these are things that, um, are compliance-related. So an additional special education paraprofessional due to, due to the need in our special ed programs. Um, we talked a lot about the medical staff, um, here at the high school in particular, and needing to have an additional .6 nurse to be in compliance with the DEFC minimums for, um, student to staff ratios, um, based off of our enrollment of just over 800. What that gives us is the ability, um, I know we just talked about it during her presentation, for, um, medical delegation, um, so that teachers, um, the nurses can train staff to give out meds on field trips, um, and whatnot. So with our current staffing, we do not, we have a waiver for that for this year, but we've been told that they will no longer continue with the waiver, so we do need to put the staff in place in order to continue that. We also have, um, a high number of diabetic students here at the high school, um, you know, a caseload that really lends itself to additional staff here, um, at PHS in particular. Jess also talked about our 23 language represented across five buildings for our, um, English language learner students, um, in addition of additional, um, .5 teacher there in order to meet those needs and to, um, spread out that caseload. The Level One priorities that were included in our budget include a half a social worker to be shared between Habermock and the middle school, so there's currently one staff member shared between those two buildings, this will increase that, um, allocation to 1.5 shared across the two buildings. Um, both Principal McGaragall and, and Principal Murphy talked about this during their elementary and, um, secondary presentations, just around the need, um, and, and the, um, level of support and service that those positions in particular provide, not just to our students, but to our staff and to our families. We've talked a, a little bit about not necessarily knowing what the profile of students is going to look like coming into the school year next year, just based off of some of our students that have been fully remote since last March, um, and wanting to make sure that we have the resources in place to support those students. Um, and we've added a tech integrator, so this is a position that existed four years ago here in the district, and the focus of the position is to really work with teachers on integrating technology in the classroom. So this position would be shared amongst all five buildings, um, but we'll be working directly with teachers for technology integration. The academic resource center, so our arc teacher at the high school, is, um, a reinstatement of a position that we had two years ago here. Um, ARC is likened to a general ed learning center for students, a place for them to get some additional support and instruction, um, in, in their content areas. Again, next year of all years is, is definitely a need there for us to be able to support students, um, and meet them where they're at, when they, when they rejoin us in September. Um, an increase in some curriculum materials, so we are coming off of the end of our five year, six year envision math purchase, um, so this is the first year that we're, um, in need of purchasing additional consumables that weren't part of that initial purchase six years ago. Mary Beth talked, um, ad nauseam about some of the curriculum work that will happen, in addition to our traditional, um, summer work and content alignment work, there'll be some social justice work that happens over the summer as well. Um, so that $50,000 includes the work, as well as the supplies associated with that work, the resources and the curriculum pieces. Um, and the Open Say Ed is a partially grant-funded program for, um, our middle schools. Our middle school, um, it does cover our seventh and eighth graders, and we would be, um, the 15,000 would go towards covering the sixth grade portion of that, so there's continuity from sixth, seventh, and eighth. I thought it would be helpful just to remind folks of the fee increases that we talked about on our last meeting on the 13th, so our current transportation fee is $200 for an individual and $300 for a family cap. Um, we, you voted to increase that by $25, so the next year, um, individual fee is 225, and the family cap also went up $25 to 325. Athletic fee went from 225 individual to 250 individual, the family cap also went up $25 from 385 to 510. It's important to note for folks that we do still have premium sports here, so hockey and football are a $50 premium sport, and we did not change the structure for middle school athletics, so it's $50 for a sport. Um, we instituted a parking fee for next year with just $1, sign not to.
Yes.
So next year, um, it's 50, it will be $50, um, for students to park here, um, in the student parking lot. Again, we have 185 spaces, um, available for students for parking. And next year, there'll be an institution of a, a cur, extracurricular fee. This is something, obviously, that I'll be watching pretty closely, I know that the administrators here at the high school are, will be watching closely, we want to keep an eye on enrollment, engagement, and making sure that this isn't, um, a, a roadblock for some of our students to stay involved, um, in, in our clubs. So again, it's $25 for your second club or beyond, so it's $25 if you join two clubs, or if you join 10 clubs as a student, um, and as a family, the cap would be $50. So after tonight, there's only a couple steps left in the process. I believe town meeting is going to be on June 22nd, um, that is the last that I've heard, um, here at the high school. And then, again, as I said earlier, the chapter 70 and local aid numbers are never finalized until the summer, um, they don't change generally very much from where we were at, either at the govern, governor or senate budget, but there is some opportunity for some, some fluctuations there, those are finalized in July and August. And then if something happens with those numbers or any of our other numbers, um, there's fall town meeting in October of 2021, where we could make any adjustments that needed to happen on the budget. That's it. The rest are appendix with just pieces of old presentations that we've done here.
Any questions at all?
Just to Erin's point, um, about the, the clubs and whatnot, what was our total number there that we would potentially draw in, we were anticipating?
Uh, I think it was just under 8,000.
Okay.
I think what we have to do is look at, go back two years and look at the number of clubs, number of participants per club, um, and then use that as the, the metric, because tough to know who's going to do one, two, whatever, so rather than look at club by club, take, if we had, if we ran 20 clubs and they averaged 20 students, take 400 as the bogey, or, or as the benchmark, and then match against it, because you don't know, it could be a big year for a particular club, or if we added a club, just still make it easier to see if we're getting higher levels of participation or lower levels, so I think that's the.
Yep, so we, I use 6,250 as the low number, um, there was a range in there when I presented it, between 6250 and I think 8,400.
Yeah. And I'm assuming that would end up in the student activities revolving account?
Yes.
So it could end up being used outside of clubs for things, for students at the high school.
Right, but keep in mind, the intent for raising fees is to lower our operating costs, so it's not an opportunity to do something new with the funds, or, you know, create a robotics lab, it's, it's really to offset.
If we exceed.
If we, yes.
If we exceed one, impotent two, I understand that, but if it is money that could be used for a future club or.
Yep.
Related to the, the club activities, I think that's what we, what we should be looking towards.
Well, and I was thinking the other way, if we need to pivot away, as we're seeing numbers are down. numbers are down.
We're not...
We're not really hurting ourselves too badly.
Right. What's our exposure, what's our risk on that? So just real quick, let me see if I can summarize this correctly. We're using the governor's budget for Chapter 70. We're not making any staffing reductions from what was hired for this year.
Correct.
Right, because removing a position not budgeted for is a save that we actually took this year and would be allocated. We are using some one-time money via CARES or SRR12, whatever you want to call it, and the, there's a higher town contribution than there was a year ago. Those are really kind of the short story for everything?
Yep.
I believe.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments? So if that is the case, then I would take a motion to submit for June 22nd town meeting a recommended school budget for the Pembroke Public Schools of $35.5 million.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Suzy, second by Lance. Any further discussion? Nothing came out of the ticket? Okay. All those in, we're all here, jeez. Opposed, abstain? It's unanimous. We can go back to regular voting.
Yeah, I was waiting for you to say "and".
It's been a year and a half, right? I looked at my clock and I count five. So then I'll take a motion to close the fiscal year 2022 public budget hearing.
So moved. Seconded.
Motion by David, second by Jim. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain? It is unanimous. So now we move on to our public hearing on school choice. So we'll open that at 7:45. Actually, we closed the other one at 7:45 also. This is required by law for us to either opt out of school choice or you automatically opt in. School choice gives us the ability to take in students from other school districts to tuition in. The money follows the student from the other district. There are area districts that do take school choice, Whitman Hansen, blah, blah, blah. Avon, Cohasset, I believe, still does. So they take it as, in some cases, just because of enrollments. In some cases, it's for run programs. Other cases, they have particular other specific needs for doing that. We have traditionally not done this just because of the impact it would have on our schools where we are numbers-wise, you know, meaning within classrooms. It would hurt our class size impact. We're not low in anywhere. In fact, in secondary, we're probably too high. Once you take each student through school choice for a particular grade, you have them through graduation, even if you opt out of school choice. So, did I miss anything?
No, just for clarification purposes, the amount of money that comes per student is $5,000. So it's not the exact, it's not really anywhere near what the Chapter 70 allotment is for students. It's $5,000 regardless of that student need. So the student could have a whole host of needs associated with them, but it's $5,000.
I thought eventually, I thought that after the second year, they count toward your October 30th, October 1st enrollments?
So there's school choice each year.
There's school choice, okay. I thought they, I thought, because one of the big things, when we did look at this seriously a long time ago, when we first started opening, when we opened the high school about trying to, because a school such as Avon, they couldn't survive without this because they don't have enough students in the community. So we clearly do. Are there any questions on this at all? So is there a motion to opt out of school choice participation for the 2000, I'm sorry, 2021, 2022 school year?
So moved.
Seconded.
So motion by Jim quietly seconded by Suzy.
Enjoy me being quiet because I'm back, girls and boys.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain? That is unanimous. Is there a motion at 7:48 to close the school choice hearing?
So moved.
Motion by David, second by Lance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain? Beautiful. Okay, so that moves us back into the regular agenda. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of Tuesday, April 6th, 2021?
So moved.
And seconded.
Motion by Suzy, second by Jim. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain? It is unanimous. So we took that. Now we are back on, we are at return to learn.
I'm going to painfully make Natalie leave with the slides back on. So on the second slide, I just, as Mike brought up during Lisa's presentation, we are currently yellow. We have been yellow for the past four weeks. I anticipate us being yellow this Thursday, if not green, and we are tiering very close to green.
Natalie, can you pop that up to the presentation mode so it's a little bit bigger? Just the bottom right?
You can do slideshow from the beginning.
Just go down, go down, go down.
Yep, as I say, right next to the percentage bar.
Next one over, from current slide. Next one, next one over, from current slide. There you go.
There you go, good job.
It's always so much fun to do when people are yelling in directions at you. You can blind...
Be yellow, turn to green!
Everybody's eyes move fast when they add a spin or two, so.
So on the next slide, you can just see where our cases are. So we, last week, 22, so that's a low that we've, Natalie's going to flip the slide soon, I can feel it. So 22 is the lowest number we've seen since the beginning of November, and you'll see in the beginning of November, we were green. So, you know, I think we are well on our way to being green again and staying green. As far as school health data on the next slide, you can see we currently have six active student cases, two at the high school, one at the middle school, one at North, one at Bryanville, and one at Habamok. These are all cases that materialized over a school vacation week, so there was no contact within the building even prior to the change in the close contact tracing. Habamok is felt wrong. We have no active staff cases. We have not had, knock on these fake wood tables, an active staff case in over three weeks. So I think that lends itself to the conversation around the number of our educators that are vaccinated, you know, and the tremendous job our maintenance staff and our school staff are doing adhering to our protocols and guidelines set in place. We talked about the contact tracing. I don't know if anybody has kind of in-depth questions about school contact tracing that you didn't want to ask Lisa that you want to ask me. I'm happy to answer them, but I think it's important, there is obviously discrepancies between the CDC wording and where DESE lands, but it is important that in both instances, students at less than six feet of space are still close contacts. The only thing that changes is their requirement to isolate or quarantine, as Lisa pointed out.
Correct, and one of the reasons they made that determination was based on the data that they've seen from testing programs that have been in schools.
Right, so the pool testing, Massachusetts is the first state in the nation to do it, has yielded positive test results of 1% or less in every pool. There's been little to no evidence of school-based transmission, even in schools that are not participating in pool testing. So I do think all of that begs itself to that, and I think we've heard a lot from families, we've gotten a lot of feedback from families about our model for quarantining, both at the elementary level and at the secondary level. But I do think it's important that we are still sharing with families when there is a positive case in the classroom. So as Lisa said, families can make the decision that's right for them. Some of our students are medically fragile. You want to make sure that you're consulting with your pediatrician regardless of what our guidance is or the guidance from Massachusetts Department of Public Health is. Again, mask wearing, masks are still required for all school activities indoors and outdoors. The only time students and staff will be removing their masks are during scheduled mask breaks or during times when they're eating. All of those times, students and staff remain at six feet apart. As Lisa pointed out, there is no change to mask requirements for athletics at this time. We are, as I said, recommending, and again, no action is necessary, that regardless of vaccination status, masks are required on school property, both indoors and outdoors. Lisa did share with you all that there is updated guidance for indoor singing. It looks very similar to what the outdoor guidance is, so the 12 feet of spacing between individuals, the 20 feet of spacing before you get to an audience member, similar to some of the stuff that we talked about when we talked about how we could have a more traditional graduation with live singing this year. The capacity limits do change on, actually, sorry, I misspoke earlier, on May 15th as opposed to May 29th, to 200 indoors and 250 outdoors. So this is for all of our events, right? So whether we're talking about sixth grade promotion night, or we're talking about an art show or a concert, the only event that is exempt from these capacity limits is commencement. There's no other caveats to these. It is commencement only, and DESE did come out and say that commencement is for high school seniors and college graduates, not preschool, not kindergarten, not sixth grade, not eighth grade. And tomorrow, we are expecting new graduation guidance or additional graduation guidance, but they did give us a little precursor today and let us know that students, graduating students can be seated three feet apart, similar to the way that are in classrooms.
So question on this, actually, question you don't have to answer today, if we could get an update when we meet again. On the indoor singing, what is that going to mean for any concerts this year?
So I can already answer that. With the number of students in the ensembles that are singing, Gwen is going to want to air on what she presented to you earlier.
Okay.
Because the spacing needed in order to have, their spacing is what we talked about when we were talking about even just allowing one audience member in when it was the 100. You know, we don't have the space to do that with all of the groups, and so if we're going to offer it for, let's say, dynamic divas but not honors chamber singers, she wants to make sure it's consistent.
Okay, so there's no way to even do it if we just keep it to the students and then livestream the performance? I'm just trying to...
Yeah, we can, I'll have her go back and look at those numbers again.
If there's anything I...
That was the plan, was having the students in person and livestreaming to the audience, so.
Okay, so if there's, yeah, anything we can change or...
Yep, the plan was to have the students performing in person and then have Pac TV filming, and I think they've already talked with Gwen about it. They're getting some nods and some thumbs up.
So they didn't consider like flipping and putting the singers up in the, I know this is crazy and I'm a little off tonight, but put them in the bleachers and have all the parents sit on the...
Gwen is not a fan of the acoustics in...
Outside, I remember, I remember that part.
Gwen is not a fan of the acoustics in the gym, nor am I, and I'm sure Pac TV isn't either.
I'm talking football field, outside.
Yeah, that's what, she didn't want to be outside.
Yeah, it's tough though, it's true, you're not...
Because there's so few nights, she doesn't, you would be unable to have a date, a rain date for everything coming up, so I think that was part of the logistical concerns.
Aaron, I know it's much later in the summer, but will there be band camp? Is that proposed right now? Or are we still waiting?
I think they have a date set, okay.
Yeah, so we are planning on a traditional band camp. It's usually an August date for us.
Oh, I have the date.
August 1st is the date they're supposed to roll everything back if everything stays on, so that would...
We find that.
Yeah.
And we also talked a little bit about, you know, re-engaging kids into our music program because some kids did get disengaged in this process. So we've been talking with Gwen about some of the opportunities for students outside of band camp in the summer to get kind of re-acquainted with some of the arts here.
But I know an email went out. I have it marked off for the week of the 16th. It's always that, two weeks before things kickoff, right?
Yep. So I'd expect we'd have a whole host of new guidance if all the guidance hasn't been lifted by then, but that is, our plan is for a traditional band camp this August.
Yay.
Remember we used to have MCAS? So MCAS, the April 20th meeting, the Board of Education took the recommendation of Commissioner Riley and made the grade 11 MCAS optional. So for students in the class of 2022, they earn their competency determination by earning full credit in approved course. So math and English for our students, as long as they're passing that course, they would be considered eligible to graduate in the June of 2022. But we recognize and understand that there are other implications to MCAS other than graduation. A lot of our students need those scores in order for scholarship opportunities, so juniors are still able to take the MCAS this spring. So it'll be offered during that same testing window as it was originally slated for. And in addition to taking it this spring, they will have an opportunity to take it in the fall as well. They must take it in person. So for some of our students that are learning remotely that aren't comfortable taking it in person in the spring, they can come in and take it in the fall. For grades three through eight, the testing window in grades three through five is May 10th to June 11th. For grades six through eight, it's May 17th to June 11th. Students that are learning in our cohort D model have the option to take the test remotely or to join us in person. Be interesting to see how that works out. We will, I will update you and let you know how many families are choosing to come in person and how many are choosing it remotely. For our grade 10 students, the only option is to take it in person. The testing window is May 3rd through June 11th, and the high school already has the dates on their calendar. Students have to take that test in person.
I think, as you talked about for the grade 11, the Abigail and John Adams Scholarship, that's what it's critical for if they want it, which is free tuition to state, any state college or university. I think so, that's the part that they stuck with, just not a graduation requirement. I think if I, I mean, I'm assuming it's important in the other grades for us because that'll help us measure learning loss. If you can at least look at cohorts, you could look at, you know, individually, right, you could look at cohorts, you could look at individuals, you could look at grade over grade, right? So I'm assuming we want to use it as diagnostic tool.
Exactly. That was exactly what I was going to say. It's more of a diagnostic test. I look at it as it gives us a good place to think about where to start and what, you know, what areas may, may need some reinforcement. Don't, I wouldn't, it's not being helpful, it's not being used for accountability purposes. So there's no harm to us as a district in terms of our ratings or anything like that.
How are we communicating this, especially to the cohort D? Will the parents and the students get an email just so that the parents, especially those that might not be...
It's been pushed out quite a bit.
Yeah, okay.
It's in the weekly bulletins from principals each week. It has been for a couple of weeks, actually.
Yep, and I thought I had seen it, but just making sure.
Yeah, it's been pushed out quite a bit.
The only thing is, I'm not sure, because the last bulletins went out before the commission's vote.
But it was addressed in that?
It was addressed that they would be voting, I think, with the assumption they would, they would follow the recommendation.
Right, it was just sort of stay tuned, you know, that there was, we didn't want to say it was canceled or optional because we weren't sure how they were going to vote.
How they were going to vote, yeah, makes sense.
But we were acknowledging it, yeah.
Do you have a cutoff date that the students need to decide if they're taking it this spring or if they're waiting till the fall?
We just got this kind of figured out yesterday.
Sorry, I got a jump, it was like I'm trying to just think about timing for families.
I will check with Dave. It's already scheduled for the last two weeks in May, so I'm not sure that, we're going to run them, so I don't think there's a problem either way. Yeah, so I don't think it's a real huge priority in terms of the numbers, but I would expect a healthy, healthy group of students will sit for that.
But I actually, it does bring questions, I wasn't sure, maybe I missed it. Yeah, are they going to super score it, or are they going to allow someone to sit twice?
For the...
For the 11th grade MCAS? To get, because that scholarship is meaningful.
You can't, you can't sit twice for the scholarship purposes.
You can't sit twice for a scholar, okay.
It's based on your first sitting.
Okay.
Yeah.
I wasn't sure if they were going to change those guidelines.
Super score.
Super score, it's looking like the SATs. They super score the SATs. I know it's been a while, but you'll understand all that again when you have a high school student.
So that's all we have for return to learn updates.
Questions?
All right, so going back to the quarantine, just out of curiosity for the 11th and 12th graders that might have to take an AP exam or whatever, what, if they're vaccinated, what are the quarantine rules? I know she almost said it.
Right, so there's, there's no requirement to quarantine if you've been vaccinated, and what we're saying is that there's very, almost no instances of needing to quarantine because of school-based exposure. So unless you're the positive yourself, which can happen even if you're vaccinated, there would be no, no, nothing precluding you from coming to school, but there is a makeup for AP exams.
Yeah, there's three different windows, so if there's a problem where we can work with the student, and they're actually offering a summer option as well.
Which is great, I just, you know, sometimes these kids get worked up for that worst exam and they want to get it over with, and if they're vaccinated and they're exposed, then at least they don't have to quarantine.
They should be okay, yeah.
Anybody have anything else? Okay, so now we get future meeting dates.
Most excited about this topic.
I figured. So we have been going pretty much weekly except for last week because of vacation, we cut the budget.
For 13 months?
Yeah. Rumor had it was twice a month, I don't know. Sue, double check that.
That was being switched.
You just come up twice a month, there's no, there's no work outside of the two meetings, two hours. Yeah, I know.
There's actually two questions in the mailbox, I just checked. The first one, if a 12th grade student hasn't passed an MCAS previously needed to graduate, do they need to take the test? The answer to that is 12th grade, class of 2021.
They are...
They're exempt from...
They're exempt from last year.
Yeah.
They were exempted last year.
Right, so they have the same competency determination for this year that our 11th graders will have for next year. And then just a point of clarification that there is a couple of, or one in particular cohort D family that didn't see the notice about being able to take it remotely. So students in grades three through eight can take the MCAS remotely. You must sit for the grade 10 MCAS in person as well as the grade nine biology. So all of those that are graduation requirements for subsequent classes, you must take in person. Sorry.
No, no, no. So here's, so normally if we meet the first and third would be May 9th, I'm sorry, May 5th and May 19th.
ninth, I'm sorry, May fifth to May nineteenth. Um, what we can opt to do is just go to May nineteenth for the month of May and bypass the fifth because we met this weekend. That would be next week. Um, one thing we do-
I think you mean the eighteenth, the fourth and the-
Eighteenth, sorry.
Isn't the fifth a Wednesday?
Sorry, sorry. It is, it's the, I got my dates wrong. And you don't even wanna know-
It happens.
You don't, but no, you don't even wanna know why, how I got to the, anyway.
You already planned it for next year.
Yeah. No, it wasn't that easy. Um-
So eighteenth only.
Yeah. Now, we did have a couple things. Natalie, that, what, the future items, I think, did they fall off from last? Don't have to worry about it now.
You, there was nothing in there. So we have school calendar. We need to do the-
We need to school calendar. We also need to do superintendent goals, and that's because that was a big thing on, I know, if you wanna hear that.
The goal is to make it to May, too?
I know. For next, this is for next year.
Yes, yes.
Because the number one goal for this year is to make forty more days and forty more nights. I didn't mean it like that.
I know.
Town meeting is moved to-
June twenty-second.
June twenty-second.
And the election vote.
Yes.
Yes.
June twenty-sixth. Did I get that one right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So we would, it would be the fourth and the eighteenth. I'm suggesting, unless somebody feels strongly, to bypass the fourth and go straight to the eighteenth.
Here, here. We can do that.
Wait, for May, yeah, I'm, I'm good with that.
And we can do a draft of the calendar and a draft of goals.
Yeah. We do draft the calendar. Well, well, let's look at last year's, get the last time we did goals. Get, get those out to this group.
Yep.
And also, the overall rubric.
Yep.
If you could just-
Some light reading for you guys.
I know. But then, but then we'll have to figure out how we wanna, how we wanna attack it. Um, when we've done goals, before we did it as a workshop, we tried to do it that way. We've tried to do it ways where people submit all their comments, put together their comments, and then try and do a playback. I'm open to anything. I'm not predisposed to a particular way. I just think we need to at least have an idea, but I don't think you can, I don't think you can opine on it unless you have an idea of what you're getting into.
Are we looking to assess our goals that we had set prior to setting new ones? I'm trying to keep up here.
Looking at the old ones to understand what they were to give a framework for the new ones, and then we would do, then we would use that to come up with, how do we wanna come up with new ones going forward.
Okay.
That would be the first. The second thing I would also recommend that we do is if we're giving goals to the superintendent, we have, should have something for ourselves.
Yep.
What would we think we would want to achieve? Um, so.
All right.
I wanna remind you guys that you all had a whole bunch of goals in the arena of setting up subgroups and parent feedback groups and communication. I think we've hit all of those this year. We've exceeded our expectations.
We have. It's the benefit of a pandemic, if there was. Uh-huh. No, but all, all kidding aside, it's, it's an important, it's an important, um, task for us. I hate to say the word task because it's not, but it's an important, um, process for us to go through and to do some inner soul searching and then determine where we wanna go as a district. Fair enough?
Fair enough. And when, you want those submitted in advance to the eighteenth meeting?
No. We'll get the, we'll get the documents in the eighteenth, and then we'll talk about how we want to proceed from the eighteenth.
Okay. And I know the last time we did this, we had the guidelines on the SMART goals. Might be nice to just refresh us with those guidelines again, if you wouldn't mind, just so that maybe we save you some work in helping us get to being SMART on our goals.
You're already there, you're still, already there.
Just wanna be consistent with how you set it up.
There are guidelines on what we're supposed to do or how we have to do this. Um, so we'll get, we'll make sure everyone has all that so we can do this the proper way.
Awesome.
Okay. So is that it? So we should have the executive session, it'll be short.
Yep.
Let's have that, 'cause they do have some information. So, I'll, newly in speed record, at eight oh eight, I'll take a motion to enter executive session pursuant to chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one eighty-three, to discuss, to discuss strategy for personal services contract and collective bargaining, as an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the legal position of the school committee as declared by the chair, after which no further business will be conducted.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion by David, second by Suzie. This one has to be by rule call. Lance?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
I'm, yes, it's unanimous. Thanks everybody for joining. Thank you, Sue, for coming.
Thanks, thank you.